Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 2024 meeting of the Kitsap Regional Library Board of Trustees. With me today are Past President Stephanie George and Eric Sisney. Marwan Cameron and Vice President Gina Steiner could not make it today. They're excused today. So, great to have everybody here, and I will pass it to Stephanie in Gina's absence to read the Kitsap Regional Library Mission Statement.
Thank you. The mission statement is, it just went whipping away, inspiring curiosity and connection. Next time I'll have that emblazoned in my heart.
Thank you, Stephanie, and I'll pass it to you, Jason, for welcoming introductions.
Good evening and welcome. Tonight, we have Autumn Alejandra as Administrative Assistant. We also have with us Tammy Jeffries, Executive Assistant to the Director. We've got Dan Baer, our Chief Operating Officer and Financial Officer, and our Deputy Director. Shannon Peterson, Deputy Director of Public Services. Jeanne Allen, who's the Director of Strategy and Communications. Lucretia Robertson, Director of Human Resources and DEI. Wendy Kyle, who is the Executive Director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation. And last but not least, Mike Rose, who is the Director of Information Technology and Facilities Management. No special guests tonight. We had Kathleen Wilson, South Kitsap Regional Manager of Port Orchard and Manchester. She's dealing with a family emergency, so she will not be joining us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. So, on that note, regarding additions or changes to the agenda, 7.01 that Kathleen Wilson would have handled will not be part of the board meeting today. So, also for Agenda Item 5, there's no public comment. Confirming, Tammy, there's no public comment? Okay, just confirming, just making sure, make sure we don't forget anybody. So, we'll go to Consent Agenda. All matters listed within the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the Consent Agenda and placed on the Regular Agenda by request. We have 6.01, minutes of the February 27, 2024 Regular Board Meeting. 6.02, payment of February 2024 bills. And 6.03, surplus material, library materials withdrawn from the collection for February 2024. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items?
I so moved.
And I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Easy. We will go to, we'll skip past, as I mentioned, 7.01 for presentations, reports, and briefings. We will go directly to 7.02. Board members with any library updates they'd like to share.
I have nothing to report.
That's unfortunate, because I was counting on you, Eric. I also have nothing to report, because I missed the staff day.
I missed staff day as well. I did get to attend the BPL Board Retreat with Jason. There was an agenda item after you left, Jason, where they were working on the updated mission statement, and it's been, it was very, it was very cool to see that they were following the steps of KRL and the mission statement that, that everybody here worked so hard on, and were making sure that what they were doing aligned with the overall five-year strategy of the library. So, I thought that was a very cool thing to see. Additionally, with the, with the foundation, excited to see that we got a new board member, Ruchi Christensen. So, the board is growing. Very happy to see that. And we will go to 7.03, Finance Committee Report, and I'll hand that over to Eric Sisney.
With two months elapsed, expenditures and revenues are within the general parameters, and that's about it. Everything's going fine.
Sounds great. Thank you, Eric. And we'll go to 7.04, Financial Report. Dan.
Good evening. Thank you. We are within current general parameters. There's not much to report. Once again, just a boring financial report, but if there are any questions, glad to entertain them. Okay.
No questions. Thank you. Library Directors' Report. Jason.
Yeah, back at me. I'll have to prolong this. We're trending fast for this meeting. So, as you know, in February, Jeanne Allen and myself made our way through, continuation from the end of January, we made our way through all of our locations to onboard the library, to our new strategic framework for success thrive ahead. So, it was, I think, a really rewarding experience. I have Jeanne speak to this a little bit, too, about her experiences from the process. But it was a rewarding experience from my vantage point in that we had FaceTime with staff who, you know, we got a chance to really indoctrinate and onboard to our, our vision for the future, which they had a part in, by the way. So, this didn't come as a complete surprise in that we've been baking and processed for this over the last, you know, 18 months or so to really get to this point. But it was rewarding to present that vision and to have, you know, dedicated staff members really discuss how they thought the Strategic Framework for Success aligns with their particular department, with their particular work, and to really answer questions and to talk about where we're going next with that. So, their insightful feedback was, and ideas reinforce our belief in the strength of our team and the strength of our library system and the potential for all of us, really, to continue to make an impact with the communities that we serve. So, as we move forward, I'm really excited about the momentum we've built thus far, though there's lots of work to do in continuing to onboard the organization, to the, all the components of the strategic plan, and really getting our leadership team on the same page, too, because in order to really onboard people, it's more than just having talks. It's really breathing it. It's imparting the words and messages and through actions. And so, that'll be, you know, part of the work moving ahead. And so, I'm gonna pause here for a little bit, because I want our Director of Strategy and Communications to really talk a little bit about her experience from that. If you want to add anything, Jeanne, I'd be love for the board to hear about your perspectives from our work.
Sure. I think overall, the experience was absolutely fantastic. Having been through the launch of several iterations of strategic plan, I felt like this iteration of the strategic plan felt more connected with people across the organization in a deeper way than any other strategic plan that we have launched or that I have been a part of. It was really uplifting to see how connected people felt to every aspect of the plan. Every, every person from frontline to back of house departments found areas where they felt really connected to the mission and the values and even the strategies. They saw aspects of their everyday work in the, the work that we're doing. And, and I think it was really wonderful to see that even in the, the ways that they organize their work, and they're already finding ways to connect that into the ways that they set their goals and the ways that they're kind of organizing their progress and reporting out about things that they're doing. So, in general, I think, overall, very, very successful. And I also felt very, it felt very connected to, I don't know where I was going with that. It just, overall, it was a really wonderful experience to see the ways that staff are connecting to the strategic plan. And we're really excited as well to do the trainings that we have planned through the next several months and connect in deeper ways with each aspect of the strategic plan as well.
Thanks, Jeanne. One of the things we were going to hear tonight from Kathleen, which I really thought was an important part of our strategic framework, is the idea of cultivating community. It's a big part of what we've done in the past. It's, it's gonna be a big part of what we will do in the future. But we, these aren't just buzzwords when we talk about, you know, cultivating connections with community. It's really about, these are essential pillars for building up our communities here in Kitsap. And library systems have always done this. It isn't anything new. But I think what we've seen out of the, you know, emerging from the pandemic, and I'm gonna get tired of saying those words, but I think it's really important to recognize how library services have shifted a bit more. I mean, we've already, we've always leaned into things like connecting with the community. We've had some subtle shifts and some not-so-subtle shifts in how we've engaged with our community and how they've engaged with us. And I think one of the things that's become paramount is, you know, in order to discover needs, it's more than just, you know, listening is an active process. It's a passive process, too. But in terms of connecting with our community, you really need to go out and make, continue to make connections and continue to rely on our partners to not only help meet our needs, but the needs of the communities who are using our, our libraries. And so, what Kathleen was gonna lean into, and you'll see her in the next couple of months, was the partnerships that she's built up through the Port Orchard Bay Street Association. And partnerships have been critical, like I said, in the past. And so, community is true in a sense, is really the heartbeat of a library. And so, it's where relationships are nurtured, you know, stories are shared, collective identities are formed. And our library system aims to be more than just that physical space, as you know, that third space, you know, filled with books. We just wanna be a hub for the community, so people can gather, engage, and really be that, you know, we really wanna be that inspiration for curiosity. And so, the social connectedness goes hand in hand with the idea of community connectedness, emphasizing the importance of those meaningful interactions and relationships. And we see them every day. If you just take a stroll through any of our libraries, you see that happening moment to moment with staff and patrons, staff to staff members, staff members to, I've run into, as a matter of fact, in the last couple of times, typically when I'm in Selvin Way, I make a pass every day. I try to make a pass into the library to just try to, you know, get inspiration, to try to stay in touch with what's happening in the library. And you see community partners using our spaces. And it's always interesting when I come out and I see a community partner in our space. And I don't know why I'm surprised, because I know that they use our spaces. But I think it really sort of enforces the idea that libraries are this hub, right? They're this hub where people need to come to forge those connections with each other, to, you know, have those relationships and to continue to build community. Because it really is, I think, and I, not only have heard this anecdotally, but I've experienced it in just talking to other people, too. There is really is a dearth of usable space right now for people to connect with each other. And so, libraries have really become valuable places for that. And so, that building collective impact is our overarching goal. And so, recognizing that the real need, that real change of progress stemmed from collaborative efforts. Kathleen was gonna talk about, you know, her, her connections with those organizations like the Bay Street Associations and work that's come out of that. And one of the bigger things that's come out of partnerships like that is a lot of our facilities projects, you know, a lot of the Imagine Port Orchard campaign came out of stuff like the Bay Street Association. What is the future for a place like Port Orchard and Bay Street? A lot of that work is done with our managers, connecting with critical organizations. We want our managers and our librarians to be connectors to the community, to get out and interface with organizations to really be able to provide, you know, the needs that, that communities, you know, presently have stated, you know, because at the end of the day, our library staff are not trained in all fields of human endeavor. Nobody is, right? But, you know, when you think about people who come into the library and the library being a space of trust, we really, people rely on us to really vet, too. And so, vetting which organization might be the best for them to go to for housing needs, right, and to go to for whatever needs. Libraries are seen as trusted sources, and our library staff are seen as trusted agents of information. So, being able to maintain those connections, to be able to get information about what's out there and what's available, we're seeing that more and more people are just making the library a one-stop shop to be able to fill those information needs. So, what I wanted to do before I moved further was ask Shannon to jump in and talk a little bit about, if you will, what, what, how these partnerships typically work. You don't have to give a lot, but I just really want the board to get a sense of how these partnerships manifest with your teams, because, you know, what we're gonna try to do throughout the, the course of our time indoctrinating not only the board, but the community to what we do and how we do it, I think it's important for people to, to know the genesis of, of projects like that and the genesis of partnerships, because, you know, they don't just shoot out of, you know, you know, from, from nowhere. They're important. So, Shannon, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. So, I think my short answer is, like, this is our long game work, and it's really the hidden work that is all over, all the time, right? So, it's really easy to talk about our programs, our services. Here's a deliverable. Here's something I can package for you. Partnerships are not that. So, the genesis can look and feel different every day, depending on kind of what's happening in the community, what types of conversations, who's having the conversations. We have so many different touchpoints from within our organization and to other organizations or community stakeholders. So, my, I think our hope and wish is that we're just keeping those touchpoints alive and making space for relationship building and telling staff, hey, it's okay. Like, if, if you wanna meet with that partner, go to that community dinner or have coffee. I'm not asking you to have a program that comes out of that. It's okay to just say, hey, what are we both working on? Does it make sense to come together now? Or is this something we just wanna kind of stay friends and see if something comes out of it 12 years from now, as it has with the Port Orchard work? So, so it's really cool. It's also very challenging to communicate and talk about cohesively, because I think our teams are, are good at it. They're out, out there doing it all the time. But it kind of takes the right moment and the right ecosystem to have something really come together, whether it's a micro thing or a major project.
It is organic. Thank you, Shannon. I think one of the best ways we've seen, and it, it pays off in a lot of great ways, but I think for us, as an impact, our building projects have been really impactful. And those have, have been a great examples of how digging in with the community has yielded really positive benefits for the library in that, you know, as the board knows, but in really speaking to the community, this library system out of the nine facilities, we only currently own two of them. And so, what that leaves is really partnerships with, you know, city government, friends groups, community centers, and the like. And so, those partnerships have been impactful in that they, those groups have been able to provide the physical buildings for us to provide our staff and our materials to be able to serve the community. So, it's important for the community to understand that. Without these partnerships, we'd really be looking at two libraries at this point, trying to serve, you know, the entire community. And so, you know, leveraging those partnerships, nurturing them, is really important. And, and you just can't build a partnership. They have to be nurtured. They have to be tended to like a plant, right? And so, it takes a lot of work. And it takes a lot of work from very skilled people. You know, continuity is important. Managers staying in places for a nice amount of time to be able to build those relationships and see them to, you know, come through. They're gonna be important in order to keep those partnerships alive. And so, through the foundation, obviously, we've been able to tend those by, you know, helping, having the foundation raise capital, too, to support some of those projects, because, you know, as you know, we are funded by the tax levy, and 94% of our funding, you know, is allocated for staffing, is allocated towards resources, and quite frankly, our operations. And so, that doesn't leave money for actual capital. And so, it doesn't leave money even for the buildings that we don't own. There's still a modicum of upkeep. In the buildings we do own, there's a lot of upkeep. Anybody that owns a house knows that you constantly have to, you know, put money into it to upkeep it. And so, that's what we're faced with, is, is how do we continue to nurture those partnerships? But more importantly, how do we look towards continuing to build those partnerships to be able to eventually replace aging buildings and how do we eventually take care of the, the properties we have? And speaking of those partnerships, we're looking at, you know, a few years off from moving into a new building with an existing partnership with the City of Port Orchard. We've inhabited the old post office, I think, in Port Orchard since, I need my historian to help me out. I think it's since 1985.
Eighty-four.
I'm one year off. I'm getting better. I pride myself in knowing history. So, in that partnership with the city, it's been important. Obviously, the city is, has engaged in through the, through the Public Utilities District. We've gotten a significant amount of funding, and there's some funding gaps that the foundation and, and also help with, with grants are going to be able to fill the need, the rest of the funding gap, to be able to provide a, a brand-new state-of-the-art library. But this is another example where a partnership has really, you know, paid its dues. And I really wanna give Shannon and her team in Port Orchard a lot of credit. Kathleen is a absolute brilliant pillar of the community in, in Port Orchard. She's involved in lots and lots of organizations, really cares about the community. And that's what we want from our managers. We don't want you to just work at a branch. You, you, you become a part of the community when you work at a library. I think Shannon knows this. We often talk about our time when we were both, you know, applying our trade in children's services at various places. And you become a part of the community. It's how you were able to make impact to a community. It's more than just like reading a story or providing a service. You get to know people's names. You get to know their dogs' names and their kids' names. And that's important, because that gives people that sense of trust that I talked about when they then come back and ask, hey, I need some other trusted resources. They're gonna come to Shannon. You know, they're gonna come to a Wendy or, or, you know, Mike or a Lucretia, because these are the people who they trust, because they've seen every day. So, we're building, of course, a new library in Port Orchard. I want Wendy to talk a little bit about where we are in that project, because we haven't updated the board. But, you know, that is a perfect opportunity to really lean into where we are and what our goals for 2024 are in the Port Orchard, because we've seen the benefits of Kathleen's early work with that to being now actually having a tangible project that we're building for and raising money for. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Wendy for a few minutes to talk about that.
Thank you, Jason. So, we are, we, I shared before, we did a feasibility study that was very successful, a fundraising feasibility study in 2023. We spent the remaining calendar year of 2023 really leaning into campaign planning and developing the structure in which we will deploy a capital campaign into the Port Orchard community. We recruited some campaign volunteers, so we have a steering committee in place. And so, as we move into 2024, our, our focus right now for the next week is wrapping up the state grant and getting that submitted. So, that deadline is April 5th, so next, like I said, next week. And then we will really be moving into our lead gift work. So, we'll spend the remainder of, for sure, the remainder of 2024 focused on securing lead gifts for the campaign. We also anticipate beginning, as we get into the maybe late summer, fall, I'm beginning to hold some discovery gatherings in the community, see who is interested in learning more about what we're doing. But that is really what our focus is on. And so, we expect to be in that lead gift phase. You know, we had started off moving really quickly based on what we were thinking was a requirement to apply for the state funds. But we learned that we didn't need to meet the, anyway, we had, there was a change in the requirements there. So, we're actually able to slow down and really work on this project in a meaningful way that I think will be providing us with a much, and our community with a much better experience. So, and I wanna say a thank you to Stephanie, who's been helping the foundation with the campaign work, sitting on that committee and really being a great thought partner for us as we move this forward.
Thanks, Wendy. And so, just to wrap up, I really want to express gratitude to the board and the leadership team for what was a very, very, I think, successful, busy year last year. We've got a full slate of goals that we talked about in last month's meeting. But just coming off of performance reviews, I think one of the things I wanna do is really applaud this team. They've all been dynamic and responsible for much success in the organization and have really, you know, I've, I've leveraged their experience to really try to make an impact. And really wanna acknowledge again that any success that seems like it's me, it's really them. And, and I really mean that. This group is, is dynamic. We talked about them a little bit in our talk about performance review. It's a group that is pretty dynamic, and it's a group that anybody would love to have, but they can't have them. So, the last thing I'll say is, and I'm gonna tap Jeanne for this a little bit. I wanted her to talk about a couple of things. You know, this group last year was involved in some heavy projects and really long-term projects that took a lot of collaboration. Part of the work for me is, is alignment. It's, it's everybody being on the same page. This group is really good at working with each other and recognizing the impacts that any one thing we do affects about 10 other things and about 40 or 50 other people and sometimes 200 other people. And so, sometimes when you see things like strategy and you'll see a, a document later, we're doing a resolution to make a minor adjustment in the fee schedule, these things, again, don't come out of a cipher. They are sometimes, you know, wrought with lots of conversation and process and, and, you know, canvassing the community and, and really talking to stakeholders who are really internal about what's gonna happen. So, I'm really proud. I was reflecting back on the website and using the tools that are on my phone and actually, you know, being a consumer of the library, it's really important to see how far we've come. And really wanted to give a, like, sort of an update on where we are with the website right now, because that project was highly successful. It was a long-term goal of the organization. This whole team had a plan in helping to get that off the ground. And we've got a couple exciting new things that are coming to the website via our mobile app and, and also our website that I want Jeanne to mention for a couple of minutes. One is personalized promotion, so it's really giving folks a more intuitive way to be able to get recommendations for the things they're searching for. And that's all part of the curiosity piece, too. When people come in, you want something that's playful, that people are gonna be able to, it's gonna be able to speak to their needs and be able to provide better results for, for them. If they're really power users, this is really what, what's meant for people like that, because our power users who are using the library every day and who are intimately familiar with our website, it gives them a way to provide more value for their searches and to yield better results. So, I'm gonna stop blabbering and turn it over to Jeanne.
So, we do have a few updates coming to the website. Personalized Promotion is one of them, as Jason just said. That is actually live on our website now. This is something that we knew was coming when we started building the website, but it had not launched. So, we just turned this on a few weeks ago. What personalized promotion means is that when we build something on the website side, so we've got kind of two things, our web
when we build something on the website side, so we've got kind of two things, our website and our catalog, when we build something in the website and it speaks to a specific service, or it could be like a book list that somebody creates around a certain topic, if someone does a search in the catalog and it somehow relates to those things we've built on the website, those things now pop up in the catalog search. So you might get a list of a few book titles, and then you might get the most recent women's history list. If you search something around women's history, that will show up in your catalog search, depending on how we kind of tailor those things with keywords and searches. So it's really cool, because now where our patrons spend most of their time, which is in the catalog, they'll start seeing things filtering in that are related to services and things that we've built on the website. So we're really excited about that. The next thing that we'll talk about is that coming in the next week or so, we'll be launching self-checkout with our mobile app. So now when you take your mobile app out and you're in the library, you'll be able to scan the barcodes on the items that you want to check out, right with your phone, pop them in your bag, be on your way. So you can use your mobile app to check out while you're in the stacks. And coming in the near future, but not quite there yet, we'll also have a feature called My Events, which will allow people to see the events that they've registered for and kind of manage that when they're logged into the system. So those are updates that we're here, coming soon, expecting, that we're really excited about in the website and catalog.
Thank you very much. Oh, that was loud. So last but not least, I would like to embarrass Autumn a little bit. And I just, she's been a new face the last couple of months, so I just wanted to know that the new board platform that was launched, Diligent Community, Autumn had a real hand in assisting Tammy with implementing this particular software, implementing the training, and just has been a great support for not only the public services team and the director's office, but also all of the leadership. And so we count on Autumn. She's one of the faces that most people don't see. She's an unsung hero in our library, but I want people to understand that she's valuable and she's played a big role in what we do. So I just wanted to put her on the spotlight and recognize her talents. And she doesn't like attention, so that's why I'm doing it. And I just wanted to applaud her for her ability to just kind of get stuff done and really be a support, especially when me and Tammy are going crazy. Autumn can center us and keep us settled. So I just wanted to call attention to Autumn. And that is my report. Any questions? Comments?
Thanks for that report, Jason. Really great to hear from everybody on the leadership team and all the updates. I personally am really excited for the personalized promotions. Talk about inspiring curiosity and connection. That's fantastic. So really looking forward to that. Opening it up to the board to ask any questions of the leadership team.
Or comments?
Well, to put Autumn further on the spot, when I, it was nice to see you here, by the way. But you're just always that quiet, stealth, get it done behind the scenes. So I know you don't like the attention, but we're glad you're here, Autumn.
Okay, no more questions or comments? Thank you, Jason, for the update. We will go, there's no old business. We will go to Agenda Item 9.01, Resolution 2024/03, Revised Fee Schedule, Adjusting Fees Associated With In-Branch Equipment Lending. I will pass it over to Shannon.
Okay, so I hadn't touched the fee schedule in at least a couple of months, so I just felt like it was time again. So I'm really excited to talk about a project that I've been partnering with IT on, thinking about our goals of accessibility and future-ready spaces. This is all that. So what we're talking about here right now is a small pilot at our Silverdale location. And essentially, what it looks like is if someone needs to use a tablet to have a meeting in one of our meeting rooms, we can hand them that. Or if they come in a wheelchair and are not comfortable with our current desk configurations, we can hand them a laptop and they can move wherever it's most comfortable. So we're only checking out in the branch, so it's tablets and laptops in the branch. We're just really excited to see how this works, how it meets community needs, the ways in which it's used, because I think there could be application and opportunity to scale all over the place in the future. This would potentially really free us up from having standing desks in our spaces. And could we think about kind of even further adjusting our spaces to be as community-centric and flexible as possible? So in the fee schedule, you'll see some fees associated with these things not coming back to us. These fees reflect what used equipment. This is equipment that will get a lot of wear and tear and everyday use. So we're not suggesting the full replacement cost that we would actually pay for these items, but assuming that they'll be well-loved and well-used in our spaces. And I think that's all I have for it, pretty straightforward, but happy to answer any questions.
No questions? Fairly straightforward enough. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024/03, Revised Fee Schedule?
I would like to move to approve Resolution 2024/03, Revised Fee Schedule.
Second?
Second.
All right. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. And we will go to Agenda Item 10, Housekeeping, Future Meeting Dates. Our next board meeting is Tuesday, April 23rd, where we'll have our Long Range Strategic Planning Committee meeting and the monthly meeting. And with that, we are adjourned.